All right, I called.
That's not just me. Oh, no, it's working.
Oh, there we go. Just needed to go off and on again. I call to order the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Voting Meeting today, Monday, March 24th, 2025. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for the public for publication to the Home News Tribune and Courier News and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. May I have roll call, please?
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman.
Here.
Dr. Pixley.
Here.
Ms. Bruce.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman. Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Vardman.
Here.
Ms. Voorhees.
We're now going to recess to executive session. Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA ten colon four dash twelve and thirteen, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to personnel and the superintendent's contract. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash thirteen. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I move we recess to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
We're now going to reconvene to regular session. May I have roll call, please?
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman.
Here.
Dr. Pixley.
Here.
Ms. Bruce.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman. Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Vardman.
Here.
Ms. Voorhees.
Can you stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had one communication since our last meeting, questions regarding the upcoming budget cuts. Number nine is our approval of minutes. So we're going to approve the hybrid voting, public meeting, and executive session from February twenty-fourth, 2025. I move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Yes.
Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Dr. Pixley.
Yes.
Ms. Bruce.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Vardman.
Yes.
And we'll move to our student representatives.
Hi, everyone. So for Irving, Authors Across America was a week of fun, learning, and school spirit. Thanks to everyone who came and read and made this week so special, including high schoolers, district staff, the police department, and the Rutgers Cheer and Dance Team. Our Irving students are busy learning about various careers this week and have been preparing with Mr. Maruka leading up to this week. Our PTO-sponsored Booster-Thon is happening now. Remember to sign up if you haven't already. We look forward to a successful fundraiser. Our used book sale begins the week of March thirty-first. More information will be coming home regarding this. We are thankful to our community for the generosity of your book donations. And finally, our annual garden bed cleanup will be on April fifth, and more information will be coming home. Join us to prepare for our students to plant and care for our community gardens.
All right, so for Bartle on March second to March seventh, it was Read Across America Week. Bartle celebrated this week with thanks to our district staff and community members who came to read to our students. Special shout out to the Rutgers Cheer and Dance Teams for also coming up to Bartle to read during this week. On the nineteenth, Bartle hosted their talent show. Students performed for families at this year's talent show, and all performers did an amazing job. March twenty-sixth was Career Day. Community volunteers will share insights about their careers with their students. All students have been preparing for Career Day with lessons led by Ms. Young. Going on now for April eleventh is the Planting Seeds of Success Show Up and Grow Attendance Challenge. Classrooms are participating in a challenge where homerooms add items to their gardens. For each day, they hit ninety percent or better attendance. Bonus items are awarded for completing a week with fewer than three tardies. On April third coming up is Epic Game Night. Information was sent home to parents via email. And on April seventh to eleventh is the Scholastic Book Fair at Bartle, so look for more information on that coming soon. April eighth is Family Stem Night. Information was also sent home via email. Please be sure to pre-register if you plan on attending. April ninth was Bartle Book Bingo. Please pre-register if you plan on attending. March Family Newsletter includes additional information on the Bartle Book Bingo. April tenth is the PTO Dance Fit Booster Thon Fundraiser. April eleventh is a half day, so students at Bartle will be dismissed at eleven forty-five, and there is no after-school program on this day. The twelfth to the twentieth is spring break for Bartle, and schools will be closed then. Lastly, for Bartle, they were awarded a $2,000 Sustainable Jersey for Schools grant funded by the New Jersey Education Association. The funds are going to be used to help support the beautification of the Bartle courtyard. Moving on from middle school, the middle school's March Madness Attendance Initiative is in full swing, and both students and staff have been showing up and dressing the part for middle school themed Fridays. First period classes are eagerly awaiting the midweek halftime reports and the final results on Friday to see which classes are advancing. This week, our Elite Eight will be narrowed down to the Final Four. Meanwhile, staff undercover Spirit Week has been a hit, with students enjoying the creativity of their teachers, dressing in green for St. Patrick's Day, mismatched shoes, secret agent gear, throwback middle school outfits, and dressing to impress. So for community engagement, the middle school partnered with Replenish for their annual Spring School Food Drive. A huge thank you to the students who donated items to support Middlesex County's hunger eradication program. Also, coming up for the middle school as a part of it is Career Day, which is going to be on March twenty-sixth. Community volunteers will visit the middle school to share their career journeys with students, offering insights into how they got to where they are today. A couple field trips coming up for the middle school on the thirty-first. Sixth grade students are heading to the Camden Aquarium. Will Glow Junior and Ms. Landis's class is will explore the Liberty Science Center for a day of scientific discovery. And then on April tenth, the seventh grade class will be cheering on their favorite night at Medieval Times. Lastly, for the middle school, the spring sports season has begun. The HPMS Owls are back in action. As spring sports kick off, students have been practicing hard and are eager for their first meets and games. Good luck to our athletes and coaches. Let's have a great season.
Now for the high school. Highland Park High School is ready for spring. We just successfully completed our NJGPA testing and want to thank our staff and students for their hard work. The Highland Park Deca Store has been awarded Gold Level Certification for Food and Retail Operations in 2025. This year, Highland Park Deca and Cuppa Glow decided to take their partnership to the next level and have the coffee business certified as an SBE as well. They will travel to Florida for Nationals in late April. The school play, the prom, opens on April fourth. Come see this heartfelt musical. The Environmental Club is doing a book drive for gently-used AP slash SAT slash ACT prep books, and we're also doing a canned food drive, and many other fundraisers are out and about to support our students. Finally, the spring sports season has just begun, and we're excited to see what our athletes have in store for us.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments for our student reps? Okay, Dr. Suska.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I bought my ticket for the prom. When I say that, people are like, oh, the prom? Nope, the musical. When I went on the website, there's still plenty of tickets available, so I strongly encourage to come out and support the students. It's going to be a great evening and lots of exciting things happening. So get out there and have fun and support the students. Tonight, I'm excited to welcome Ms. McNally, the principal of Irving Primary School, and I see that Mr. Maruka is here, the school counselor for Irving, to spotlight two well-deserving students. Ms. McNally? Well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Of course, this is one of my favorite evenings. Hi, little ones. Welcome to the big school. All right, in no particular order, I will start with Daniel. Daniel, do you want to come up with me? You don't have to. It's okay. It's up to you. Come up with dad. So one of our nominations for Mrs. Lucas and Mrs. Gray was for Daniel Nojewitz. Congratulations, Daniel. I have a couple of things to share with you that your teachers have said, and this is from Mr. Maruka and myself as well. You are an awesome addition to our kindergarten class. You are a super mathematician, which means you're really good at math. Do you like numbers? Yeah, and you're really good at math games, too. And you love to share all that you know with your class. You are a hard worker, not only in the kindergarten classroom, but during related services as well. You have faced challenges along the way, but you persevere, which means you never give up. You're determined, and you always shine in everything that you do. You smile, you keep trying, you ask questions, and you always find new ways to solve problems, even when things are hard. You have a huge ability to stay positive, and you work through obstacles, and you are truly inspiring to not just us at Irving, but to your whole family, and we're so lucky to have you at school. So, Daniel, you are the kind of student that is a joy to teach, a joy to be around, and your smile and kindness make the whole day better for all of us at Irving. We love having you and your wonderful family as part of our Irving family, so congratulations to you, Daniel, and keep shining bright from all of us. All right, next up for our student spotlight tonight, we have a huge spotlight on Julia. Would you like to come up? All right. All right, Julia. You were the last of the Hamadi family to come to Irving. I don't know how I feel about that. So Julia is a first grader who prominently displays our Irving whole school expectations through her actions, her choices, and kindness. And what really makes you special, Julia, is your ability to care for others, and you truly care how all of the kids feel in the classroom. You are empathetic, and you are a person that students look up to, and they come to for help. You're always kind, you're always caring, and you bring a very positive attitude to the classroom, even when things get hard sometimes. And you really just make everybody around you feel better. I know you always put a smile on my face every time I see you in the morning. Mr. Maruka's face, too. So Julia, you are often the first one to step in if someone needs you. You're an inspiration, not just to your friends, but to all of the staff at Irving School who also nominated you. We are so lucky to have you, and your entire family is part of our Irving family, so keep up the great work. And Bartle's going to be very lucky to have you, but not yet. So Julia, congratulations for all of your hard work. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. McNally. It's always some of my favorite presentations, and I love to hear all the amazing things that are happening in Irving, and congratulations to Daniel and Julia again for being great Irving Dragons, great friends, and great community members. Congratulations. And of course, I cordially invite you to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but I understand if you need to get up to leave to celebrate or, you know, for Mr. Maruka and Ms. McNally head home after a long day, so feel free to excuse yourself, but thank you so much for coming and have a good night. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policy Number Zero One Six Seven establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. There's nobody in person for public comment. Is there anybody on the Zoom? Angelo, how many people do we have? Four people. If there's anybody for public comment, please raise your hand. And with no hands raised, we're going to close public comment. And we're going to move to our board committee reports and recommendations with curriculum and instruction first.
So curriculum instruction met on March thirteenth. We went through the benchmark data in mathematics. One thing that we always have to remember about the benchmark data is that it assesses the standards taught in each quarter. And the initial benchmark is a pre-assessment. So they're not always comparable across time points. But generally, the benchmark data looked quite good at Irving. Where the benchmark assessment is actually aligned with the curriculum, students were successful between fifty and seventy-five percent, and that was the winner assessment. We'd expect to see that moving forward. At Bartle, it was similar around the pieces that were assessed in terms of standards are actually covered. Bartle actually, those are benchmark assessments that are comprehensive across the year. So those numbers look a little lower in terms of students scoring sixty percent or higher. But those numbers should go up each time we do the benchmark assessment, so we'll do it again in the spring and then end of the year, and so that should show growth. And but students actually looked quite good at the pre-assessment based on things they had learned a year before, too. One of the things we talked about was the assessment strategy and whether, because Irving was assessing benchmarks taught in each quarter, Bartle's assessing comprehensive for the entire year, and the middle school is actually assessing based on standards covered in each quarter as well. What the what the strategy would be moving forward around benchmark assessments. In ELA, they assess benchmarks as they're taught, just like Irving and middle school, and so one of the ideas was maybe we need to do that in Bartle as well. So that was a point in discussion and something we we did touch on. And then at the middle school, actually, the pre-assessment looked quite good. They use edgy elastic, and we noted in particular that the scores were much higher than last year. They went up, I think, almost thirty percent in seventh grade, which was a huge improvement, and things looked to be much kind of more solidified there. I think one of the things was a year ago, there was a lot of turnover in terms of teachers because of family leave, medical leave, and so forth, and so there was a lot more instability, and that showed in seventh and eighth grade in particular. But they looked very, like, very good, like, passing, you know, seventy percent, eighty-five percent. So that was really positive and something we really noted. Another thing we talked about was the music schedule. There are fifty-one students participating in band. Attendance has been really high. The band structure did a survey with fifty-one students because there was some sense that maybe the early kind of time in band could shift because it is so early, and students are having to wake up early, that maybe it could shift to the afternoon. They surveyed the fifty-one students. Forty-one of them already have afternoon activities, and then would have to make a choice between band and something else. And there haven't been complaints about it being in the morning, even though it is early. And so the kind of best course of action right now seems like it's actually in pretty good shape, even though it might be inconvenient seeing one or two students. So I think the plan is something to monitor, but as of right now, it seems like it's actually situated probably the best to allow for participation and and for students to participate in multiple kind of activities. And then we did talk about the field trips that were actually mentioned, some of which already were mentioned. I've been trumped on this one already. The Adventure Aquarium was mentioned, Medieval Times, Deca's going to Florida, Model UN is going all the way to New Brunswick. And then there are some school visits for students who will be joining new schools to help them bridge. And lastly, kindergarten is going to the State Theater, and that's just a few highlights of the field trips. And in terms of voting, I mentioned the field trips. That's number one. Approval of participation in the teen arts New Jersey program, so that's to support four students of middle school and six students at the high school participating in that. Approval of the completion of the special ed monitoring. Approval of home instruction for seven students and approval of supplemental instruction, home instruction for one student. Any questions?
I just have a, I just a comment or a thought. So I like the conversation around, you know, thinking about our assessment strategy. And I was just thinking it might be a good opportunity to even interview or talk to teachers to see ultimately like it's meant for a tool for them to be able to kind of go back and and understand where they might need to intervene. So I'd be curious, their kind of just overarching feedback on the strategy as we think through, you know, what a new version could look like. So that's just my one thought that came to mind.
Yeah, and I don't think it's not necessarily our, the board's job to decide on that, but it was more kind of feedback. I think along those lines, though, one of the things we talked about in was if you are doing a comprehensive assessment, some of that is providing feedback that's not useful to the teacher's instructions. So when what level of detail are teachers receiving that? So you can see the standards they did cover and where students are with that as opposed to items they that are, you know, going to be taught later in the year. It seemed like they were getting that broken down. But I think, you know, more generally, just thinking about the assessment kind of approach and want, do we want to keep that consistent or is there something kind of coming out of it? We did, we did talk about even for next year that they do actually seem to have control of the envisioned benchmark assessment in Bartle, that they could adjust those questions, so they were only the questions taught in that quarter. So you could go, I think, with the current benchmark assessment and just reorganize it and make it more useful, and then that would, you know, hopefully speak to teachers and provide better feedback.
Yeah. Any other questions for curriculum?
I'm kind of just bump in. I want to say I think it's important for people, y'all on board certainly, but all, but also watching in the community to understand that, as I understand it, our use of assessments in this way is relatively recent. I think just last year was might be the first time we did this in middle school. Is that correct? You sort of mid.
I think they've been used before, but I think there's been a change of assessments in some of the schools, and so
That's what it was.
Some of that's been really recent.
Yeah, yeah. So changing in the types of assessment we're doing at the company we're using, I think this, I think I I see this as a commitment, part of the commitment by the board and by the administration, you most importantly, to to keep a close tab on what's happening in our schools and to use these assessments, not just to give them, but to, but to find a way to make them really useful and to, and to act on what we learn sooner rather than later. So I was really happy to, to see this data, but also see the administration is taking it really seriously and is thinking already, but how can we improve our, our use of it and put it and put it to good use, you know, right away next year? So that's good.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move to Equity and Excellence.
Yes, Equity and Excellence met last week. We met on March twentieth. Just trying to situate Mike. For some reason, things aren't working out today. Okay, here we go. So we met on the twentieth, and our first item of discussion was the Comprehensive Equity Plan Timeline. Dr. Suska kind of briefed us on where we are in that process, and just to give us everyone an overview, who those who may not be familiar with this massive project that we have on our hands for the next couple of months. This is a requirement in the state of New Jersey for all public school districts, and we are mandated to conduct a needs assessment and develop a new three-year plan to address first to identify and correct any discriminatory practices, biases in our policies, programs, and practices across all schools within the district. And we have to align them with kind of the state's ideas of what it means to be an equitable school district essentially. And so there are there are data points that we have to achieve and show that we are compliant with, and if not, we have to develop a plan for correcting those areas. So we are now required to produce a new three-year plan. The major change this time around to the mandate is that school districts are now required to show how their policies are being implemented. Previously, we had to show policies that were addressing the requirements around equity in all areas. We didn't necessarily have to show how our policies are being effective at implementing or addressing those areas. So a bit more work on the district, to put it mildly. On we, administration is working to ensure that the evidence that they are putting together, which does have to stay on the website for the three-year period of the plan, is clearly also evidence that does not include any confidential data on any students. So we just want to also make that clear. There is a tight timeline to meet the deadline, which is, I believe, is June. I don't know the specific date in June, but I know the deadline for submitting our report, our evaluation is due in June, and that has to go to the county. Dr. Suska shared that there is already put together a committee of district leaders, educators, parents, students, and community members. And this committee will also have subcommittees, and they will work through subcommittees on the different phases of this process between now and June. They've already started to meet and talk about, to talk about data collection and completing the needs assessment, establishing equity goals that are required, is needed, and then gathering feedback from stakeholders before presenting the final plan to the board for approval in June. So the idea is that the plan will be drafted in April, sent to community stakeholders for review, and then again, approval and submission, submission made of June. Subcommittees will tag team on gathering the evidence for the data collection process. And there will be a committee meeting this Thursday, I believe that would be, right, for to begin phase one of the, of the process, which is again, the data starting to put together the needs assessment and collect data, and then it will go into phase two. Sorry, phase two is gathering data. Right now, you're just putting together the needs assessment. So the template for developing a new plan consists of those three phases. I think I just went over that. One other requirement that is new, that's going to be a part of this process, is that we have to include a staff questionnaire so that there's actually staff input in this process as well. What staff considers areas where we may need to improve in our equitable equity practices and areas that we're doing well in. So that questionnaire is currently under development. Tonight, we will be passing or presenting a board resolution to conduct the needs assessment that is required. This is a state requirement, so we will present that in Equity and Excellence tonight, our second meeting in a row. This is a state requirement, so we will present that in Equity and Excellence tonight, our second meeting in a row. They were actually presenting something for take a moment for that. Um, the state requires that the district, I I think I mentioned that that we do develop our own corrective actions. I probably didn't emphasize that, and this is the key discussion that we had to our highlight of the discussion is the fact that we as a district have to not only identify the areas of need, but then develop our own corrective actions and review our implementation of those actions. So it really is the onus is on the district this entire process. So we will be having more discussions about that, I'm sure, the next few meetings. Um, we also then moved on to discuss policy nine-three-two-two, Public and Executive Sessions Remote Participation, and just the added added clause that board members who participate in meetings remotely um in public sessions shall abstain from voting on any agenda items that involve the disclosure of personal details, legal matters or other confidential information if they are not present for the executive session where those matters are discussed. Um, then we discussed, uh, Dr. Seska did share with us a preview of the new of the the recent school culture and climate data survey, um, survey and the results from that survey. Um, uh, let's see. There was an attending uh training that Sam Perez, who is our um School Culture and Climate Assistant Principal, I believe is her title at the high school. She's been leading the um uh charge there uh and has been doing a wonderful job. She attended a training on unpacking and reviewing the data from the uh survey. A couple of highlights here we discuss. Well, Bartle staff has already begun begun to review their data and they found one area where everyone reported that student-to-student interactions are an area of weakness. Um, so the leadership teams are already starting to plan ways to strengthen that area. Um, there are, there is a data collection and report process being undertaken by each school administration. There are the way the um the survey uh platform is presented, that the staff can identify red flag areas that indicate that there is a mean that's below the threshold um and could be an area of concern. Staff can also look at the responses to those red flag areas to unpack them. So there's just a lot of, it's a rich dataset and a lot of different um ways they can look at that data and analyze the data. So again, they're still in the process of doing that really early in the process. Um, but it sounds like they'll be able to gain a lot from that process. Um, okay. Uh, and there's also uh links to resources provided in each area, which is really cool feature as well. Um, and the plan will be to administer the survey since it is a pretty massive survey um two times per year as opposed to a three-time-a-year um frequency. Okay, and then we moved on to discuss um February discipline. We looked at um re- the removals of in-school and out-of-school suspension numbers. Um, and uh just a quick overview of that. At Bartle, there were uh four instances total um involving eight students, zero incidents without removals actually, because none of the removals actually included suspensions at Bartle, so that's a good thing. There were discipline issues that were able to be uh resolved through um non-removal uh measures. The middle school, there were sixty-three instances instances of um discipline incidents involving forty-two students. Ten of these incidents um resulted in in-school suspension or a RISE program and nine in OSS, out-of-school suspension. Most of those out-of-school suspensions were due to physical altercations um and uh uh, I guess incidents that did require that level of uh suspension as per the discipline code. Um, at the high school, there were eighty incidents involving fifty-three students, uh, one in-school suspension and one out-of-school suspension. So again, we just kind of noticed how even though the number of incidents were high, that could include a range of, you know, disciplinary fractions. Uh, there were just a limited number of removals and they were really able to address the issues without having to remove students um from their learning environment. Uh, we review the numbers on restorative actions, peer mediation and lunch and learn uh as well as effective school solutions. Um, so all linked to our discipline report. And Dr. Seska shared a couple of written reflections that um RISE students completed as a part of the reflective work that's required in their time at RISE, and that's at the middle school in particular. So it's, we were, I think, I know I had requested in the past that we hear some more of that qualitative data. So it was very, very nice that you brought in those examples. We appreciate that. Um, at Bartle, students um have to participate in some sort of a learning opportunity as uh during their time in RISE. Um, that could be a TED Talk or or related, uh, another video related to what are, whether, what other areas of concern they may have. So, you know, it was just nice to hear that there are different ways that staff are really beginning to address the needs that students have uh that are not necessarily punitive. Um, and then we talked about um district clubs, activities and athletics and sort of the demographic breakdown. So their uh administration at the request of Equity and Excellence did look at the demographic breakdown of um the district clubs and activities. This includes sports as well as scheduled B activities. Um, and we just, again, wanted to look at even when we're thinking about being um diverse in all of our areas and really making sure that underrepresented students are represented in our academically, in academic classes, but that also extends to recreation and clubs as well. Um, most clubs uh from the data uh show that most clubs are predominantly um the members in most clubs are predominantly white and Asian students. Um, the administration uh has discussed possibly not running clubs that have low participation levels. So there are some clubs that have really low participation levels. Um, and rather than keeping those running when there really isn't a high interest, thinking about opening up opportunities for clubs that will have a higher student interest and perhaps even more diverse interests among the student body. So that is one um area that the administration is considering. Um, there are peer leadership groups at the middle school and high school that will help identify what the student body wants to support in terms of new possible activities um that can be brought in for clubs. But, you know, the 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 major takeaway is yes, that we still have a lot of work to do and hopefully bringing um more of our students into clubs that they may be interested in, but then also thinking about providing clubs that have greater interest among a more wider range of our student body. Uh, and I think that's it. Yeah, because we didn't have to go over any of these. I think that's it for Equity and Excellence. Any questions? Comments, concerns?
Thank you. Oh, and um the one item.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
See that?
Like to read it.
See what happens? Okay, let me pull it up. I didn't even have it pulled up. I'm about to read. Yeah, but yeah, I'm thinking all digital here. Oh, it's not supporting. Okay. All right, uh, so I'm gonna ask that we, well, I'm not asking this now, am I? Am I just reading the?
Go over there.
Yeah, so that's what I can't pull up.
Oh.
Hold on a second for some reason. Now it is. Okay. So I will be presenting for board approval, the resolution of the Board of Education of Highland Park to um authorize the affirmative action team to conduct a needs assessment and develop a comprehensive equity plan. And I'll just read the language in this uh resolution, right? Getting the green light for that? Okay. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Education requires all school districts to develop and implement a comprehensive equity plan to identi-
No, it was attached, so we don't have to read the whole thing.
We don't. No. Okay, perfect. I didn't know it was attached. So I don't have to read it. This is, again, it is, we do have to, again, conduct this needs assessment. It's a state requirement and the idea idea is we're passing this resolution to um show that we are going to be putting together this needs assessment that's going to look at all areas of the district affairs, whether it's, we're talking about uh board policies and directives, school uh staff training as well as practices in our schools and classrooms um and ensuring that our programs are equitable across the board. That's all.
Thank you. Um, and we're gonna move to finance and facilities.
So we met on um March eleventh. And it was Anne, Allison, Nikki and myself from the board and Dr. Seska and Mr. Rosa. And for the most part, the the majority of our, almost all of our meeting was discussing the preliminary budget that we wrote it on here this last week. So I'm sure we're not going to go into that weeks. We uh discussed extensively and I actually, if any in the public is listening, um, you can watch last month's board meeting where we um had a good conversation about um concerns about the budget and the uh and the revenue and expenditures and so forth. So um feel free to look at that again. Um, the only other areas to comment on from our our meeting and really it was um uh, Cal MacIntosh gave us a uh a report so that we'd have time to focus just on on the budget. Um, and in his report for the after-school program, uh, he highlighted that they had hit over three hundred students, like three hundred and one as of that day. Um, so uh that was an accomplishment and uh the subsidy program was moving along, although he acknowledged very slowly um cha-challenging in the in the process of the county set up for that, but it is moving along and it's just gonna uh, it's just taking more time than expected. He's applied for a free snack program. I guess that that's through the county, I believe, um, and that's in the process. It's also a six, eight-week process, but we could be able, we should be eligible for that as well, which will be raised financially. Um, he commented on our new STEM program. There's a member of the community who's working with our fourth and fifth graders and after kid and at our after-school program, piloting a STEM program um March tenth, April twenty-first, and that could be expanded, second or third graders in the future. Um, and the last thing he shared was there was a um uh, an unannounced state inspection of our after-school program in February that was very extensive and um we we passed, there was no concerns raised and he they they covered many areas um within our program. So that was very nice to hear. John shared um uh facilities report also. extensive work that that all the different major projects that are going on, Irving basement waterproofing. Um, purchase orders are out for that one. Irving has a circulation pump replacement going on, ordered, the parts have been ordered. Also Irving, pipe and AC unit insulation, purchase orders are out. Um, at that point, the Bartle Bartle bathroom needed to go back out to to bid. There was uh no viable proposals the first time around, but you see on our agenda that we have a proposal we're going to be voting on tonight to move forward with the Bartle bathroom uh project. Um, the beam replacement and then what we call the, I think of it as a Bartle walkway, um, or moving the walkway really, um, is moving along also. There's soil testing, just amazing how many different steps there are to these projects and how long they take. But it's a uh, plan has still not yet been finalized on that. And high school greenhouse is moving along. There's a floor foundation plan that's that's uh been developed and there we're waiting for the plans before going out to bid. Uh, we had spoken last time, high school baseball field renovation. A timeline has been established, actually fencing was just put in. Um, and he shares some nice pictures of that fencing. Uh, so that's moving along, not to interrupt the baseball uh season for our students. Uh, keying of all locks, lots of projects going on from John. And that was our, oh, we also discussed this policy ninety-three-twenty-two, the most discussed policy that we that ever, I think, last couple of years. We agreed with what Equity and Excellence said, um, option two, and adding that wording about abstaining and so forth. So it sounds like a lot of um, and for our agenda, we have a bill list for February twenty-fifth to March twenty-fourth. The amount of four million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand about. Approval of the treasurer's report uh as of January thirty-first. Board secretary's report also was January thirty-first. Board event certifications, as we do every month, that um our accounts and our funds have not been extended, overextended. Um, we have some budget transfers to approve, traveler-related expense reimbursements. Uh, then we have a list of contractors for professional services. Um, the high school assembly on Islam and Eid celebrations. Uh, New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Education related to uh phys ed. Uh, we were going out to another agency, CCL Therapy, to contract, should we need OT services? Uh, and another pit musician for the musical. We have one student that we're adding for bedside instruction and five students that are being added to our out-of-district um that need out-of-district placements and they're uh on our agenda. We have four contracts for McKenney-Vinto students. Um, that's um students who will be attending in Highland Park from other districts because they've been displaced from their homes. Um, and so those districts pay us tuition, that's number ten. Number eleven is the reverse. We have Highland Park students who will be attending New Brunswick because of a displacement situation through McKenney-Vinto. So we have two students there. There's a legal settlement agreement, that's number twelve, um, per our school board attorney's recommendation. Uh, and then the master collaborative educational services agreement with the Ed Services Commission of New Jersey um for our five-year uh agreement with them. And then we have the uh, what I spoke about was we did, we do have a proposal here for the Bartle uh bathroom project that we can, will be voting on tonight. Uh, now the Ed Services Commission non-public renewal contract is one of these pass-through things, I guess, that we have to do, right?
The, these are contracts that we um
No.
partner with the um Educational Services Commission. Provide these services to non-public schools that we partner with, that we receive their allocation from from the state.
Okay, we provide the service.
We, we don't, we contract with the commission to provide the services.
Gotcha. Okay, I didn't know that. I meant to ask you before. Okay, that's uh, that's the finance and facilities agenda. Any questions?
I would just like to clarify that the bid is actually being rejected. Um, we had one bidder, um, and they sent a letter that they had a material mistake.
This is the one we're rejecting. Oh, I'm sorry.
So we are rescinding their bid. So it's out to bid again, so hopefully at the April twenty-eighth board meeting, we can award of the bid.
I knew about that, but I didn't realize that's what this one was.
Yeah.
Just want the Bartle bathroom.
This is, this is a bid that uh we cannot accept or they they rescinded it.
Correct.
Sorry, thank you for that correction.
I mean, I do feel like hearing all those facilities repairs, like happy spring, everyone, because it's like signing stuff, right? Excited about it.
That time of year.
Yes, that's how I mean.
Any other questions for finance? Okay. Um, I'm going to review the uh agenda items for personnel and then policy. So for personnel, um, under number one is two leaves of absences as listed. Number two is approval of resignations, Ida Shiner, effective April twenty-first. And then Ms. McLean, who will be retiring at the end of September, so congratulations. Um, number three, some appointments um as listed to note, welcome uh again to Julie, who is uh Julie Amadeo for baseball coach at the middle school. Um, some dates reflected in the middle school, high school leadership um shifts uh to accommodate Ms. Brady's return. Um, movement on the guide for Ashley Huggins, welcome Ms. Jaeger, who will be a part-time ESL teacher for the middle school. Um, welcome Mr. Barrow, who will be a orchestra at Bartle. And then we have, uh, welcome to Nishan Simonson for H-back maintenance helper. Um, we have some additional hours from Nishan Burt. Um, Mix Perez is going to be climate and culture specialist at the high school for um the remainder of the year. Um, some staff working STEM night at Bartle, thank you very much. Um, Ethan Schwartz as an administrative assistant at the Irving and Bartle After-School Program. Yenira Coronado for translation services. And then the approval of one transfer for Ms. Kebizas um to be a paraprofessional from being a paraprofessional at ICR to um Irving Special Education One-to-One. Any, not that I can answer many, but any questions? Okay, and then for policies, we have the policies and regulations for first reading. Um, our student smoking spectator code of conduct for scholastic events and then um the regulation for student smoking, and those are our policies. And we've discussed those previously in uh different committee reports. All right, we're going to move to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes pub-public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policy number zero-one-six-seven establishes establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Angelo, how many people do we have online? Oh, we lost one. Okay, um, anybody online for public comment? If you could uh raise your hand and Angelo will let me know. And with no hands raised, we're going to close public comments. And we will move to our board action items. Um, curriculum, take it away.
I'm moving items one through five.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prouse?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Staniou?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Okay, Equity and Excellence. Okay, Equity Excellence.
Yes, I'm moving item number one, the one and only.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Pruse?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Finance and facilities?
Um, I move items one through fifteen.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Pruse?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Uh, yes, except, uh, staying from number nine.
Number?
Nine.
Nine. Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Okay, for personnel, I'd like to move num, items one through four.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Pruse?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
And for policies and regulations, I move number one.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll move to board liaison reports. Does anybody have a liaison report? No reports. Okay. For my president's report tonight, I have, uh, one change that we need to document. So in order to accommodate some changes in schedules. Um, we're going to have to swap two committee members. So for Equity and Excellence. I am going to be joining Equity and Excellence and then Dr. Pixley is going to move from Equity and Excellence to Curriculum and Instruction. So it's just a nice even swap. Okay? And we'll update the website and stuff accordingly. Well, I won't, but.
Data, we'll have the website updated in addition, the calendar invites and, and everything adjusted accordingly.
All right. And any old business? New business? Okay, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?